Good evening and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, our July meeting, which tends to be a rather quick one with school activities not going on. And with that, I'd ask everyone to turn off their cell phones if they would, and please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move into our agenda. And first thing we will do is call the roll.
Okay. President Wasserman?
Here.
Vice President Branstad?
Here.
Secretary Gordon? I'm here. Treasurer Kaminsky?
Here.
Member Baker? He's not here. Member McFarland? Also not here. Member Singer?
Here.
We do have a quorum. First thing we'll move into is the consent agenda. It's on your agenda, just quickly review them, the media minutes from last week, several resignations, recommended employment for a special ed teacher, the, some textbook approvals that we've seen before, adoption of Michigan School Code of, Code Articles for non-resident, for non-resident and resident school, or non-resident school choice for joining and non-joining districts, legal invoices for payment, and that's it. Can I have a motion on the consent agenda and we'll open up for discussion for additions or deletions?
I move we accept consent agenda items two point one through two point, was it six?
Moved and supported. Any questions on any of the items or any additions or deletions anyone would like to see? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Now we'll move into request to address the board, and we have several students here to address this. So guys, what we tend to do is limit it to five minutes per person, and give us your name and the school attendance area you're in.
If you don't mind, we're all presenting together for the presentation.
Oh, okay.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Haynes, I am a junior at Midland High School.
My name's Alex Jewell, and I'm a senior at Midland High School.
My name is Emily Fisher, and I'm a senior at Midland High School.
My name is Sam Robinson, and I am a senior at Midland High School.
My name is Matt Pike, and I'm a senior at Midland High School.
Good evening, everyone, and we come to you today as students of the district and citizens of the democracy of Midland. We see a problem with the school system, we'd like to address the problem, propose change. We believe that Midland Public Schools should not have instruction on the federal holiday of Martin Luther King Junior Day. For those of you who do not know, the day occurs on the third Monday of January. We come in the spirit of a portion of the belief statement presented in the school improvement plans. This portion states that continuous improvement requires risk-taking and change.
According to the US Census, the minority population rose 1.4% between the years of 2000 and 2010. This provides more rationale to receive the day off. MPS has always strived to be a district that promotes diversity and positive lessons. Having Martin Luther King Day off would add to this legacy and continue to promote the diversity that MPS sets a standard for. MLK Day is not only a holiday which promotes racial equality, it is one that is meant to honor and educate on the courage, pride, and continuous no-quit attitude that Martin Luther King pioneered. With all due respect, taking a day off from kinetics and learning true lessons and importances in life by celebrating this day and honoring one of the true influences of the world wouldn't hurt anybody. In fact, it would promote what MPS is supposed to stand for. By having the day off, by not having the day off, we are wasting an opportunity to fulfill the goals of MPS, and there's no debating that. I would also like to point out that Mr. Sharo mentioned diversity twice in his newsletter last year, one of which promoted the embrace of diversity and advocated for accepting students in MPS. To end my portion, I'll leave you with a quote from Maya Angelou, one also which Mr. Sharo used in his newsletter last year. It is time for parents to teach young people early on that in diversity, there is beauty and there is strength.
Midland Public Schools has never taken school off on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and we are one of the few districts in the state and in the country to not receive this day off. Martin Luther King Junior is an American icon, and he sacrificed his life for the betterment of the country, and to this day, he is still one of the most influential leaders America has seen. We want to promote service to the community on this day rather than to just giving up the students another day off. Many African-Americans already skip this day, and to prove a point, ignoring the holiday only perpetuates the stereotype of a black holiday, and this is not a matter of a black and white, but of community. To dishonor this day is to dishonor his legacy and the progress of women as well.
In today's day and age, it's obviously very important to be aware of public perception, and Midland Public Schools represents the entire city of Midland, and not having this day off, Martin Luther King Day, undoubtedly has had a negative effect on the way people from Bay City, Saginaw, and neighboring counties have perceived Midland in the past. An example of this is multiple MPS employees have voiced their opinions on having Martin Luther King Day off and have talked about, when they talk to their colleagues that work for other districts and tell them they have to go to school on Martin Luther King Day, a lot of them are embarrassed to say that, and a lot of the people from the other districts are not too surprised because of Midland's perception that we may have. Emily would like show you picture from the Dow High School parking lot earlier this year. At first glance, you're gonna say, what does this picture have to do with Martin Luther King Day? Obviously, it is a picture of the multiple students outside of Dow High School flying the Confederate flag, and really doesn't have a lot to do with Martin Luther King Day. What it has to do with is public perception, and the perception that Midland continues to have that we are not a welcoming community, to not a diverse community, and, this is another example, this picture is just another example of something that shows those stereotypes that counties from, people from other counties, excuse me, may have about the city of Midland. And as I said before, Midland Public Schools, we represent the entire city of Midland, the entire county, and it is our job to continue to hold those strong values that some of my fellow students talked about earlier. The fact that MPS ignores Martin Luther King Day as a holiday, just another example, just like the flags outside of Dow High School, and I'd leave it to...
Our city claims to be the city of modern explorers, yet at the same time, we cannot keep up with these modern times. We currently are in the minority, being one of the few districts in the state of Michigan that goes to school on this day, as Emily stated earlier. It would be more beneficial to honor and acknowledge this as a holiday than to ignore it. Taking this day off would not negatively impact learning or the school calendar whatsoever. This past year, we had 29 scheduled school days off, which include Christmas break, spring break, as well as other PD days, and that 29, number 29, does not include the numerous amount of snow days that we had. Martin Luther King Junior Day is one of the three federal holidays that we do not have off, along with Columbus Day and Veterans Day. All right, so the current plan that Midland Public Schools has is to have us take exams on that Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of the third week in January. Our proposed plan would to be, would to have, be to take that Monday off, which is Martin Luther King Junior Day, take exams on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and then take that Friday off as scheduled. And this is what Saginaw and Bay City currently do for their first semester exams, and this is similar to what we did at the end of the year last year, when we went to school for one, went to the school Monday, and then we had exams Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We know the schedule is currently set, but if we can take a few snow, a few snow days off and reschedule PD days and exam days during the middle of the year as we did this past year, we should be able to plan one day off months in advance.
We as a community are better than this. We are one of the best districts in the country, as proven by various publications this last year. We are a progressive community challenging the world through Dow, Northwood, and our very own school district. With growing populations, it is necessary to make others feel welcome when entering the city of Midland. This is going, there will be the time when Martin Luther King Junior Day will be off for all schools, so why not today for Midland Public Schools? If we are stopping our endeavor tonight, we are prepared to take this matter to the public eye, including various publications and social media. Simply for the matter that to ignore this, this holiday is to make a mockery of what America is supposed to stand for, it makes frauds of us all. We thank you for your time tonight, and we'd like to leave you with a quote from Martin Luther King Junior himself. Human progress is neither automatic nor inevitable. Every step towards the goal of justice requires sacrifice, suffering, and struggle, its tireless exertions and passionate concern of dedicated individuals. Thank you for your time tonight.
Alex, what was your last name? I didn't hear what you said.
Jewell. J-E-W-E-L-L.
Okay, thank you.
Just so you know, our process, we typically would not dialogue after this, but I do want to say, A, thank you for coming, B, your articulate argument was, was well, well done. We do have a committee that considers calendar, because they consider all sorts of stuff. Your proposed solution is one that I would love to have them hear. Just so you know, one, I won't call it flying the ointment, but one of the larger hurdles to get through on any calendar changes, it's a negotiated item, so that'll have to enter into that. So, so in terms of us being able to just wave a magic wand and make it happen, it's not quite that simple. It's also not quite that hard. So I will ask Mr. Sharo to make sure that the, the calendar committee addresses this as part of their next turn on the calendar. And the calendar is typically set for each year, several years out, and then the next year is reflected upon and changed again, or not changed again. So they'll, they'll put that into their process. So I just want to thank you for coming out and how articulate you were tonight. Yeah, and I'll, and I'll get you guys a response, you know, where we stand in a short period of time. Okay? So thank you, and you're welcome to stay. You're also welcome, you are free to leave, so. I had to try. Okay, now we'll go to, anybody else want to address the board tonight? I'm sorry, those were folks that requested. That said, we'll move into Board of Education presentations and hand it over to Mike.
We have, we want to recognize our local scholarships this year, and we had our students at Midland Public Schools earn thirteen million dollars in scholarships, and we have a number of local scholarships that are, is listed on our website, and they're going to be scrolling on the screen following the taping of tonight's board meeting as well on MPS TV. And so we'll recognize them that way and thank them here publicly for their significant donations to our students, and congratulate our students for receiving those.
Great. Any questions or comments?
I'd just say that when we're at graduations, and Mrs. Castle, the last graduation I went to would mention all the achievements, and it's just amazing how much they're able to generate in scholarships, it's just amazing every single year, it's just awesome.
The dollar amount is, is great and impressive, also visiting the counselors' offices and seeing the support there, and constant renewal of those scholarships that are available so that parents are, or students are always able to get the most recent information on scholarships available to students.
And Mike, I'd just like to applaud that we're going to publicize it more, meaning not for recognition of our students and recognition of the donors. And it, it, it shouldn't be a dirty little secret, it just announced a graduation, so I really appreciate you doing that.
I think it's amazing when you read the list, the number of different students that receive these. This isn't like there are just a few students who get some big full ride scholarship, there's just so many people in the community that have put together scholarships for different things, that no matter what a child's interests are, there's probably something they can apply for. It's just wonderful support in the community.
Any more? Okay, Mike, move on to the MHSAA.
We're looking for you to approve the Midland Public Schools joining the Michigan High School Athletic Association, and I think as most of you know, we have to do that through, right up, right through motion for Michigan High School. It's the only option you really have out there, but you do have to join each year.
Do we have to read the resolution?
We do have to read this resolution by their bylaws.
So I'll take a motion for the resolution, then we'll read it.
And then Yvonne gets to read.
Move approval of agenda item 5.1 relating to the MHSAA.
Moved and...
Support.
Supported, and we'll move into reading of the resolution, then we'll have discussion and a vote.
Okay, so the, this is membership resolution for the year August 1st, 2014 through July 31, 2015, and the secondary schools, which are under the direction of this Board of Education slash governing body, are Herbert Henry Dow High, Midland High, Jefferson Middle School, Northeast Middle School, schools in the city of Midland, county of Midland. They are hereby enrolled as members of the Michigan High School Athletic Association, Inc., a nonprofit association, and are further enrolled to participate in the approved interschool athletic activities sponsored by said association. Board of Education slash governing body hereby delegates to the superintendent or has designee the responsibility for the supervision and control of said activities, and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of said association, and adopts as its own the rules, regulations, and interpretations as minimum standards, as published in the current handbook, as the governing code, under which the said schools shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics, and agrees to primary enforcement of said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. In addition, it is hereby agreed that schools which host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament policies, procedures, and schedules. This authorization shall be effective from August 1, 2014, and shall remain effective until July 31, 2015, during which the authorization may not be revoked. The above resolution was adopted by the Board of Education, okay, Education slash governing body of the Midland Public Schools on the fourteenth day of July, 2014.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? I'll just add a quick point that Mike may have been making, I hope I'm not preempting. This is required that, A, we abide by the rules and bylaws by accepting this, and B, it's our only way you get to participate in statewide events, and oftentimes, the only way you get to compete against other member institutions. So if we want to fly teams to compete in the Saginaw Valley and state tournaments, we need to agree this and agree to do what they ask us to do, so.
There, there are some good things that, there's updates constantly there, how they handle concussions, how they deal with injuries, and also protection of athletes.
Yep.
So I know that, that it seems a lot of verbiage, a lot to read, but there's a lot of really good thought that goes into keeping us to a standard and levels of safety, too.
As a former football official, the annual meetings of every sport, highlighting safety issues and areas of concern, and training for coaches, et cetera, is wonderful, so.
Can I clarify something on the motion? The, the motion that we have is for the MHSAA membership resolution, that was read by Yvonne.
Correct. So that's the motion at hand, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Wasserman, I didn't hear who made the motion.
Oh.
I did.
John and Pam.
I saw you moving, I thought I'd repeat it, but I didn't.
Now we're gonna move into preschool compensation, and for those who have read the agenda where it says preschool workers' compensation, don't associate workers and compensation together in terms of a benefit, it's preschool workers, compensation of preschool workers.
Good point. So we're asking for a motion for approval of the addendum to the salary letter that you had proved earlier. Since then, we finalized the new preschool program and the employee, and due to the assignment and the duties that she has to carry out, we have to make some adjustments to that salary and the compensation, and you have that attached.
Can I have a motion for that, that salary schedule?
I move we approve item 5.2, which is the 2014-15 salary letter addendum, and I'll support that.
And we have support. Pam, any questions or discussion?
Just a quick clarification, with the, with the preschool workers, this is bringing money into the district, although we have more...
Tuition-based preschool program, gonna be aligned with the IB-PYP program, soon as we're fully certified at the PYP level, it'll be certified as well, and so with that tuition base, our hope is to break even, you know, you leave yourself a little bit of a buffer, and so Mr. Bruton and Lynn Libsit and Luanne Mezinger have worked quickly on this project, as you know, we've done this rather quickly, and we're ready to go at this point. We get the teacher leader on hand, then there's an assistant that will also be hired, you see in that pay scale at some point, but the teacher leader is the key to get her up and going, and we're ready to enroll them, I think the rooms are met most of the certifications at this point, so we're feeling really good about this start.
I sense a lot of growth with that program.
Really excited, really excited. Any others? Would none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We have, turn to Mike again.
It's gonna be Mike and Brian, as Gary and Bob are gone tonight, so you'll hear us constantly. Neola Board Policy Manual, as we adopted that in its entirety, and there's some few minor tweaks to three policies, 2430, 2431, and 8210. One is simply on drug testing, which Neola had inserted, we do not do that at all, and so that's being removed, and the second one is for overnight trips, you know how quick that occurs with teams qualifying for playoffs, and the language had that being approved by you, you're gonna now make that ability for me to approve those for you at that time.
Any other ones, school calendar?
Yeah, thank you. I was missing on the third one, so.
I was just lucky, because that's the one I opened.
Okay.
I'll accept the motion in a second, then we can have a discussion and questions.
Motion to accept the 5.3 Neola updates.
Have support?
Support.
Have a motion and support, questions or comments on the three different policy edits? I personally am very comfortable, like the, the drug testing one, I'm very comfortable with that disappearing, I'm also very comfortable with giving you authorization for the board to support trips, as you use your judgment.
And I'll notify you through the Friday letter when that's occurring.
Sure, sure. And lastly, the, the calendar where we've added language about the official holidays and how this whole calendar thing works a little bit, as per tonight's discussion, extremely timely. So, okay, any others? Seeing none, move into vote, all in favor of supporting the three Neola policy changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, now we're gonna move, if I can quickly move back to my screen, I don't know how to go backwards.
It's the delegates for you.
Shoot, went a long way. I tried that. Oh, well, I apologize. I got her.
Got it.
Okay, now we're moving on to the adoption of Michigan School Co...
Proposed Michigan Association School Board Delegates, 5.4.
Yes, yep. Oh, oh yeah, that's right, I meant consent agenda, I apologize. Do you want to, this is, I'll bring this one up, I guess, Mike. This is a duty of the president of the board to nominate delegates and alternate delegates to the Michigan Association of School Boards meetings or conferences they may have. In the, last year, I'd asked Dr. Kaminsky to be that delegate and for Lynn to be the alternate. I have not contacted each of you, as I would have in the past on this one, frankly, and I'm willing to ask if anyone is interested first to be the delegate. There are, the meeting last year was in Grand Rapids, I think it's in Grand Rapids again this year, I'm not certain. It's not mandatory attend, but oftentimes, this year particularly, if there's school finance, things that are pertinent, we will want somebody to attend. If you cannot attend as the delegate, we can always send the alternate, or we can send somebody else, it's not that rigid. They just don't want somebody who's unauthorized by a school board to show up in a meeting and speaking for a school board, it's that simple. So the wave of a baton, we can do a quick vote and change the person who goes, so it's not a, it's not a big deal. So if, if, if John would be willing to be the delegate, and I put it in, if you really prefer not, and someone else would like to volunteer, I'll put your name in, and we can do a vote from there, so.
I'm comfortable going forward and having myself available.
Okay, and Lynn's not here to be the alternate, anybody else want to volunteer to be the alternate?
Sure, I'll be alternate if you're looking for one.
Pam, that's fine. So all we've got is John is delegate and Pam is alternate, you're seeing democracy in action here.
Where does this meet usually occur?
No, no smoked rooms here.
Late October?
Yeah.
I believe. John might have left, somebody went.
Yeah, and I've gone to, the one before was in Traverse City, but yeah, it was Grand Rapids, but I thought one year was in the Detroit area.
Yeah, they move them around.
Yep, so.
Is it a Wednesday thing, a weekend thing?
It's usually like a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday thing.
Yeah.
So minimal time off of work.
And Pam, you know, I probably should have nominated you to be the member, being the newest board member with the least certifications, because often at these conferences, you can do cram courses towards your school board certification also.
Excellent.
And you can get them all done, and they'll do like the mornings for classes and the afternoons for sessions. Okay, so you can talk John out of going when the time comes, it's one way maybe to get a lot of those done. So anyway, any others? All in favor of our named delegate and alternate, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations. And of course, if you can't, just let me know, and we'll do what we gotta do. Now we'll move to the hold harmless millage and non-homestead millage ballot language.
It's that time to place it back on the ballot, and we've decided that November would be the good time to do that, one being that most election costs are covered already, and if we did do something in February, you could have two different things and get them mixed up on what they're doing.
Right.
And so this is a given, I hate, I hate to use that word, but it should be a given to the voters, this is, allows us to get our full student foundation allowance, and so without passing these, instead of the full foundation allowance, you would, that amount would be deducted by that dollar amount, and in our case, it's significant because of our industrial properties, bringing such a large amount, and so you've done that once every ten years, and so we will do some educating, don't run a campaign, but we'll educate people because it should be common sense to approve this, or else you don't get your full dollar amount. Part of proposal A allows you to get your full dollar amount.
And Mike, are we voting on the language tonight, or are we voting to put it on the ballot tonight?
We're voting to put it on the ballot, but the, the language is there for you to do that.
Okay. Do we need to read the language to vote?
You do not.
And does this require a roll call vote?
You know, let's do that to be case.
I'll do it just to be case, okay. Everybody's had a chance to, to read this, this is our hold harmless millage, everybody's well, in this table as well, where what that is, we'll have to educate the community a little more what it is, it helps differentiate us from other districts, a small amount, I shouldn't say small, a significant amount, we certainly don't want to lose.
And it's both hold harmless and 18 mill.
And 18 mills, and a renewal, and a four renewal.
They'll go together on that.
And the consequences for the public of not renewal is while we say the state is basically decides what we spend, they decide the total, subtract what you locally contribute, and then give you the difference. If we choose not to locally contribute, they don't make that up, it's just the difference that would have been, and that would be devastating to this district, it would wipe out ninety percent, eighty and a percent of our ballot, of our budget, so. With that said, I'll take, I'll take a motion in a second on the language to be put on in November, and the acceptance to put this on the November ballot.
I move to, for five, agenda item 5.5, the hold harmless millage and non-homestead millage ballot language to be put on the next ballot.
November general election, yep.
November general.
Okay.
Support.
Support. So a motion for the November general election and the language, and Cindy, you can decide who supports it fast enough. With that, any more questions or comments?
No, just to reiterate, this is a renewal, this is not an increase, this is just a renewal.
Yep, correct.
And I would just like to say, Jerry, say us a lot, thank you to the voters, you know, we, we do not take for granted any support, and
Absolutely.
We, we're glad we're entrusted with the ability to conduct these operations, and I think it's very worthy.
In fact, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, the hold harmless millage is unique in that it is not a constant millage.
Correct.
It's an authorized millage to collect a certain number of dollars, and when property rates go up, we decrease... And when property rates go up, we decrease the millage from the authorized level to make the dollars work out. So in reality, taxpayers have been paying ever decreasing millages and constant taxes over the 10 years for the hold harmless portion.
Correct.
Did we vote on that, I think, in November or something?
Yes. Yes, as part of this. So I just want to make clear on that, that it's just property values go up. That one component does not go up in terms of dollars out of the taxpayer's pocket. Okay, that said, let's do a roll call vote. I gotta make the secretary go to the roll call.
Oh, okay. President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Branstad?
Yes.
Secretary Gordon, yes. Treasurer Kaminsky, yes. Member Baker, not here. Member McFarland is not here. Member Singer?
Yes.
We have 5-0 with a quorum. So it'll be on the ballot. And thank you taxpayers for your support. Move to finance. John, do we have a finance committee report?
We do not have a committee report, but we do have some gifts.
Brian's prepared to fill in for Mr. Cooper.
The finance committee brings to you this evening, for information, gifts totaling approximately $5,700 from the Dow Chemical Foundation, a gift to the Midland High Marching Band for $250. The generosity of the Jefferson Middle School PTO, two separate gifts, one for approximately $404 for physical education equipment, one for $295.52 for seventh grade books. And then a series of gifts totaling $5,000 from the Dow Chemical Community Gifts Fund, based at the Midland Area Community Foundation. In $1,000 increments, went to the Midland High School JV softball field equipment, another $1,000 to the Midland High School varsity softball for field equipment, and $1,000 to the Midland High School girls' basketball team. At HH Dow, they received a grant for $1,000 for freshman JV baseball and also $1,000 for varsity baseball as well. And then for action this evening, we bring to you from the generosity of the Plymouth Elementary PTO, for supplies, subscriptions, and field trips, a gift totaling $17,955.
Wow to all of it, especially to the last one. First, thank you, but then first I'll also accept a motion for 6.2.
I move we accept item 6.2.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Any questions or comments?
First of all, I had to read that twice when I was reading it before, because that, that is a very generous gift. And then I also want to think, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't the Dow Chemical Community Gifts Fund the one where the students do something and then in return? They volunteer. I really like that fund. I think that that is a really unique way to do donate. I donate my time and I get something in return. It's a great lesson for kids.
Any other comments? I know when I read the agenda the other night, I just, Plymouth is my wife's alma mater. So I went, Sally, your alma mater's $18,000.
That's amazing.
I was taken aback. So thank you to all the parents out there. Okay, that said, we'll move into vote. All in favor of accepting that large gift and thanking all the others, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes unanimously have it. Move to HR.
Mr. Bruton's going to do that again.
On behalf of Midland Public Schools, we would like to extend our deepest sympathy for two memorials this evening. The first to Betty Westover's family. She passed away on June 20, 2014. Ms. Westover was an elementary teacher with the Midland Public Schools for more than 28 years. She served at East Lawn, State Street, Cook, and Chestnut Hill. She began her MPS career in 1957 and retired in 1985. The second memorial is for Matilda Stelmacher, who passed away on June 28th this past year. And Stelmacher was part of the food service staff at Dow High for 20 years, and she retired in 1989.
Our sympathies to their families.
Moving on the agenda, there's a list of letters to and from the Board of Education, a list of our future, our future meetings as currently scheduled. And now we move into study, discussion, and session. And I'll move to Angela first.
All right. Not a lot, just once again overwhelmed by the generosity donating. And it was great tonight to highlight scholarships. Appreciate that. And I also really appreciate the Midland High students who came tonight and spoke. I like it when kids get involved and think through some of the stuff we do. And it's not just parents standing up there, but kids actually take a real interest in what goes on. So I want to thank them for coming tonight.
The thing I'm thinking about is Midland's initiative to explore Midland's future and Midland Public Schools as being a part of that. And how I look forward to this planning process with the community is in hand-in-hand with the planning of Midland Public Schools and what, what we're going to do in the next five and 10 years. And just working with Mr. Sharrow and, and making plans to make sure we are strong and able and ready to move forward.
I just wanted to say that I hope everybody's enjoying their summer, enjoying the nice weather. I hope everybody remembers to read a few books every few days and do a few math problems every single day. That's it.
I do. I do math every day.
I really don't have anything to add. Just thank you to the donors. It's really nice, even those schools not in session, to see that those donations are coming in. And I'm really impressed with, with the support of the community every board meeting. It's amazing.
I repeat almost what everybody else said, so I won't, I really want to appreciate students come out and speak in their mind in a, and in a very articulate and logical manner. And appreciate their argument as we go forward. And that's all I have for tonight.
I think we have a chance to educate our students here. They did a great job tonight. I think, trying to think about how we handle this one going forward. You know, maybe we can bring some of them in and have a discussion just on the process and how it comes. And, you know, they did a nice job, but there were some things in there maybe not completely accurate that I think we have to take a look at. And, you know, I would say the majority of schools still don't take Martin Luther King off in our day. Not that we shouldn't, understand. I think we should take a look at that. But I think that statement was probably inaccurate. And it would be a great chance to work with them. And I think they have a good point and they want to make a good point. And they've done a good job and help them from maybe going the wrong way with their message. You know, as you heard a part of it in there, there's a little bit of almost, if you don't do this, you know. And then we have to educate them how the democratic process works and how school boards and school systems work through those issues. So I think good, good chance to educate them as well. Facility studies update. So we, the construction manager and architect have been through all of our facilities at this point. They're working now behind the scenes quickly to come up with needs, wants, the difference of those, where we stand on all of our facilities as far as open and closed facilities. And they're going to make an initial recommendation to us at your August board meeting. We've already been beginning to set up what we're calling community meetings. So three meetings with hopefully representative groups of our community to take that data, that information they provided to us and have a discussion on how they feel about that. And what might they support or what might they not support as we try to put a plan to go forward about our facilities. Today, in the Monday communication Cindy had put together last week for another purpose, a little fact sheet about our buildings. And it was kind of stunning for me to take a look at it. I guess maybe still being fairly new here, most of you know that. But I think even those of you who know that, when you look at that sheet, the average age of our buildings being 61 or 62 years old, I believe, across. And then the square footage that you're maintaining and trying to handle out there is significant. And so I think that's some of the things we're trying to reach out and figure out what to do, how we can decrease some of that square footage, how can we become more efficient? How do we maintain buildings that are at average age 61 years old going forward? So I'm excited about it, but nervous about it at the same time. I'm sure you are, too.
It needed to be done, and it will be what it's going to be. And the question, can we go creative solutions to whatever the is is?
Yes.
Well, and I think people have been requesting this type of thing.
Exactly.
You know, this isn't something we've gone out.
Long-term facility plan.
I think people have kept questioning every time we've done something.
Right.
You know, what's the long-term plan? And until you do what they're doing right now, it's hard to do a long-term plan. You have to see where you're at to really figure out where to go.
And I think that's the key point, that we're making a commitment to them. This is our plan for 10, 15 years out. And so I think they want to hear that, despite it may not be as good of news as we'd all like it to be. And the last piece on that, as well, is the consultants working with us have provided some software. We got a chance to look at it today. And I think last week, we talked about communication and how we communicate quite well one way. But now it needs to increase to two-way communication. And so this is an attempt to do that. The software is called Talk To Us, and we will listen. And so right now, we're doing the talking. We're not getting a lot of input back. And so it's time to get that input back. So we'll see where that goes. I've seen the first few of it today, and it looks, initially it looks good. And so we'll see where it goes from there. And that is all I have for tonight.
Anything by anybody else?
I did have one thing. We're using, for our board meetings as board members, we're using maybe a different way to communicate on that note. Anybody want to mention something about that?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yep.
So our first board meeting with some, a software tool called Board Book. And we will be going paperless, the right movement to go forward. And so you probably saw some board members struggle tonight moving through their devices. And so it's the first time we've been inside that. There's some nice pieces of that besides the paperless part of it. One will certainly be for you, where it's all archived in one place to review any time at any point and go back and look at, as well as the minutes. And the other side is for Cindy, who does all the preparation for you on the agenda going forward. As we ask our employees to wear more hats and do more things, it's important that we learn how to become more efficient. And this is a tool potentially, we hope, that will make Cindy more efficient. As you know, since the least I've been here, I've doubled her duties as far as the communique and the newsletter and all the pieces that she helps me with. And so if we can take, make this little job a little easier on this end in order to continue to do those other pieces, I think it's important that we attempt to do that.
I agree.
I just think it's neat that there's, we get a board packet as board members. And if we want to reference something, we have it here. Because I don't bring all my papers with me. It really is nice to have it all in one spot in case we want to reference something that we did a few months ago.
It seems to be very easy to use.
Very nice. And not distracting. In the past, we tried this seven, eight years ago. And it was really just PDS of all the documents. And everybody had their big laptops and big laptop screens. And everybody's glued to their big screen. This works a lot better with the pad. Okay, with that, we stand adjourned.